Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint: safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
Brantley Gilbert returns to Grand Forks. Fired Up Tour 2020 with special guests Chase Rice and Brandon Lay. Alaris Center, Saturday, May 2nd. Get tickets now at Ticketmaster.com. The brand-new album Fire and Brimstone drops everywhere October 4th. Brantley Gilbert, live in concert. Check more at BrantleyGilbert.com.
The City of Grand Forks, a proud home of the University of North Dakota City Council Meeting, Monday, January 6, 2020. It's hereby called to order, welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
1.2 Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of America, to which it stands, one nation, and for our freedom and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under 1.3 Mayor's Announcements, and our community lost a great leader this past Christmas as former city council member, state legislator, and champion of democracy, Eliot Glassdine passed away. My thoughts continue to be with Diane Eagle and his sister Joan and the whole family. What a wonderful tribute last Friday at the Museum of Art regarding Elliot. We see far that we retire because we stand on the shoulders of giants, giants like Elliot. He set the bar high for all of us in public service. Let's take a moment of silence for Elliot. And thank you to Public Works crews for their great work this last week and over the weekend. The heavy snow, followed by the rain and sleet, created challenging conditions, but does not stall cleanup activities. Crews have been hauling snow away from downtown. Corners on Main thoroughfare sidewalks, currently working on mailbox areas next. Crews finished up all the alleys on Saturday, will be following up to widen those areas and bike paths on the greenway. Should be finished towards the middle of the week. I hope that happens. So far this winter, crews have plowed the city three times and have hauled 2,200 loads of snow away. Regarding safety, please be careful at intersections and drive with caution, especially near schools. It's slippery out there, so be careful, and don't be in a hurry when traveling around town. Also, please shovel the snow away from the fire hydrants near your property, so the fire department has easy access should they need to use them. And lastly, we ask corners, please take care of the sidewalks in front of their properties so people don't need to walk in the street. Pedestrian safety is important, so please make that a priority. The city calendar is out, and should be reaching all households soon, if not already. And thank you to the Park District, who once again took the lead in the design. It is beautiful. And I hope all residents appreciate that this calendar is a collaboration with all taxing entities, the Park District, School District, County, and the city, to incorporate combined information for the urgent benefits of our combined residents. And thanks to Public Information Center and the Public Works for their end-departmental projects. So with that item, two awards, presentations, and proclamations, we have none. Public hearings and second reading of ordinance is 3.1.
Public hearing on petition to vacate part of the 10-foot wide storm sewer easement along south line of Lot 2, Block 4, Leclerc's addition.
We'll open the public hearing on 3.1. We'll close the public hearing on 3.1. Council action on 3.1. Mr. Veen motions. Mr. Sandy seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 3.2.
Public hearing on amendment 2019, City VG Annual Action Plan.
I'll open the public hearing on 3.2. Close the public hearing on 3.2. Mr. Weber moves approval. Yes, Dockler seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 3.3.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to private hydrants.
Open the public hearing on 3.3. Close the public hearing on 3.3. Council action on 3.3. Mr. Sandy motions. Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 3.4.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to building sewers and connections and restrictions on use of public sewers, sump pump discharge, disanitary sewer policy, and program implementation action plan relating to level of cadmium in water.
So open the public hearing on 3.4. Close the public hearing on 3.4. Council action. Speaker, Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, so in reading through the new ordinance, I don't recall a city council specifically saying that we wanted any connections to the sewers for the sump pumps. I don't recall us saying we were going to require it to be done by a licensed plumber, but I see that that's the requirement in the...
The other was brought up, so Lee Ray.
I mean, I recall we were saying that perhaps plumber, well, I don't remember, maybe I don't remember the whole conversation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As part of our working group with inspections and the Water Works Department, Public Works, we talked about the concern that we have that people are, get a licensed plumber in order to evaluate the connections that they currently have, and what all is tied into that, so that when they do tie it into the sump, and then we're making that switch over between the two seasons through this permit, this seasonal permit, that it be done appropriately. And so that was a concern by the inspections team, that that be something that be required for the homeowners' benefit, as well as for the city and the management of the system.
Thank you.
I don't like it, but I'll move approval so that we can move this on. If people have issues with it, come back to the council in the future and let us know, and then we can always address it in the...
We have a motion for Mr. Sandy, second. Ms. Marshall, any further discussion?
Here.
Hearing on, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 3.5, oh, so that was treated as an amendment. Oh, because it was changed. Okay, so now we need to vote on the motion as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. 3.5.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance annex, all of Auditor Subdivision Number 51, located at North 42nd Street and 27th Avenue North.
We're going to open the public hearing on 3.5. Close the public hearing on 3.5. Council action on 3.5. Mr. Sandy motions. Mr. Weigel seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. Action items, who would like action items pulled for discussion? I will pull 4.0, 4.2, 4.3, 4.8, 4.10, and 4.12. Anyone else like things pulled for discussion? Hearing none. That leaves 4.1, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.9, 4.11 for action. Mr. Sandy motions. Mr. Veen seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 4.0. I would like that moved to the Cal on January 13th. Mr. Sandy?
I move.
Okay, and then Ms. Marshall seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. And then 4.2.
Annual Report Special Events Program.
Welcome, Andy.
Good evening. Tonight we have two re-grant program reports to bring before you, the first of which is the Special Events Program. We have Julie Riggs from the Creator of Grand Forks CBB here. For both of these annual reports, we'll be looking just for you to accept the report, as well as reauthorize the respective organization to administer them again for the 2020 cycle.
Thank you, Eddie. So Ms. Riggs, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and members of council. I will be brief, as I sent most of the information in the packet that you all received, which included an overview of what we did in 2019, along with a copy of the criteria, the application, a list of 2019 recipients, and then a list of the complimentary services we provide. Just to go over it a little bit, we did begin managing this program in 2017 as a way of being more cooperative with the event funding program that we manage at the CBB. So we've been doing it a few years now. It's been a good process. It's seamless. Basically, we just added to our criteria. A lot of our criteria matched up together with the economic impact, wanting events to be multiple days. What we added, and I think makes it a better program, is the adding the quality of life for local residents. I think it's very important that our events create that as well, otherwise why would people want to come to our community? We do place special emphasis on new events and events that are planned by local organizations. So we do try to provide additional funding for those new events and things that will stay in our community and repeat in our community over time. We do review the applications four times a year. We have a five-member committee, which I am part of, and we do have a board member from the CBB, as well as past CBB board members. So these people are all very well-versed in events in our community and the impact that they do have. So just a quick overview of 2019. We awarded just under $177,000 in funds, with an additional $48,000 in enticement funds. So the $177,000 came out of the event funding program, which organizations actually go through the application process. The enticement funds are funds that the CBB awards for those types of events we actually have to submit a proposal for. So normally, we do that years out. So there were, we awarded $48,000 for events in 2019, in addition to that $177,000. These events had over a $10.2 million impact in direct spending. So again, this is not economic impact, this is not how often those dollars rolled over in our community. That's attributed to people coming into our community, shopping, dining out, lodging, gas, and those types of things. We do have a calculator that we subscribe to from Destinations International that incorporates our local taxes, and we provide as much information into that calculator that we can, knowing local costs, how much they spent for their venues, room blocks that they had, and so forth. So it's about the closest we can get to indicator of spending possible. We continue to provide complimentary services for these events as well. So in 2019, the CBB provided over $333,000 in-kind services for events. That goes down to our VIP gifts, signage, hospitality gifts. For example, we had a hockey tournament this weekend. Every player got a bag filled with hockey tape, stick wax, things that they needed, along with a $7 concession voucher, and every coach and every team manager received a gift as well of North Dakota and Minnesota products. So we really try to make our community a highlight when these events come. We continue to work very closely with these events through promotions and services that we provide. We would like to continue to manage this program. As I mentioned, the process is seamless. It seems to work very well. My board and our committee is quite engaged with it, and we'd like to continue on as we have in the last few years. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Mr. Veen.
If I could say, on the Laris Commission, you know we often work about, talk about a number of the events that go on, and the collaboration and the coordination, and I probably had some concern about the benefits, because I think they should be multiplied, not just direct benefit. But I think the work that this program has done and your leadership has been really beneficial for the community, and I would certainly be convinced we would want to continue doing that with the work that's been done.
Thank you. And you know, there are a lot of events out there, sometimes we don't know, that are coming to the area. So if they find out about this funding and they go through this process, this allows us then to reach out to them, so we can assist in promoting it, and then provide our in-kind services as well.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion approved.
Okay. Second, Mr. Sandy. Further comments? Mr. Weber.
You've probably explained it, and it's in the packet, but if you wouldn't mind going over it again, the difference between the $125,000 that comes from the general fund, or that comes from the city, and the 177, where did that extra $52,000 come from?
That comes out of our budget. So that additional $52,000 plus the additional $48,000 in enticement funds comes directly from the CBB budget.
One more reason to have you keep doing this collaboration. And the $125,000, I believe, we've been at that level for many, many years.
We, Mr. Weber, members of council, we've generally increased it at the same pace that we increase our whole flat sales tax. It's how we tie that. So it has increased over the years at small increments, but I should just, I should just point out too, just wanted to clarify, it's not general fund, it's Economic Development Fund from the sales tax.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
And if I could add, we do try to increase our portion each year as well. It really is budget-dependent. And unfortunately, with the Canadian exchange rate, the way it's been the last few years, our budget's been a little bit lower than we would like to see in that fund as well.
But with the multiplier effect, this is appropriate to come from the growth fund, and fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second before us. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 4.3.
Annual Reports Arts Re-Grant Program.
Andy.
Similar to the last one, just another annual report for the, this time for the Arts Re-Grant Program. We have Becca Bonbach from the Community Foundation.
Thank you. Welcome, Becca.
East Grand Forks and region.
So, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, members of council. Thank you for having me. Excuse me, I have a bit of a cold, so I am going to try to keep this even more brief. We have been ecstatic, actually, to have the Arts Re-Grant Program with the Community Foundation for the past two years, so since 2017, as we facilitated it in 2018 and 2019. And the program facilitates the creation of arts and cultural opportunities here in the city, City of Grand Forks. This past year, we distributed $115,900 to 15 eligible applicant organizations, and those organizations have to specifically have missions geared towards the arts or culture, and reside in the City of Grand Forks here. We received 15 eligible applications. Their requests told $190,000, and so we were able to meet 61% of those requests. Our reviewers, we have five reviewers, and those represent people in our community here, as well as we have one reviewer from Fargo and one from the Crookston area. And they score on artistic quality, impact, and organizational capacity. Yeah, so this year, we had 15 organizations. We generally know those organizations are going to be applying year after year. We're very familiar with what their organizations do, their missions, and work very closely with them throughout the application. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions from council? Mr. Sandy motions approval. Ms. Marshall seconds. Having no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you, Becca. Next is going to be 4.8.
Create Special Assessment District for Project 8159, District 744, paving 367 to South.
Mr. Lieberman.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members. I'm Ed Lieberman, Assistant City Engineer. This evening, I bring forward Project 8159, Reconstruct 36th Avenue South, requesting approval of the engineer's report and creation of a special assessment district. This project will reconstruct a portion of 36th Avenue South from the intersection of Columbia Road and 36th to a point about 700 feet east on 36th. This is, for your reference, this is an area directly behind Walmart on 32nd Avenue, that stretch of pavement there. This pavement is about 28 years old. It's severely degraded, and this project would fully reconstruct it with thicker pavement to address some of the heavy truck traffic that it's experienced over the years.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Veen.
So with the heavy truck traffic that goes on in that area, are we going to do anything different this time, or are we going to do the same sort of construction?
Mr. Sandy, we are planning on thicker, excuse me, concrete pavement. Existing is seven inches of concrete. We are already planning for eight inches plus 12 inches of select fill underneath, so...
That's great. Perfect. Thank you. I'll move approval.
Mr. Veen seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you. 4.10.
Street capital maintenance update information.
Mr. Lieberman.
Good evening again, Mayor. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about our streets maintenance program. This is something we are very proud of, to provide this level of infrastructure to the City of Grand Forks. I want to recap, recap or summarize the 2019 program and talk a little bit about 2020 and what it has in store. In 2019, we were able to execute $30 million of construction work to benefit the residents of Grand Forks. I divide that up into three different types of work. The first is partnership programs or partnership projects. The second is development support, development both residential and business, and the third being city-funded recapitalization or repair projects. In the area of partnerships, we were able to complete 24, roughly $24 million of partnership work. That includes a large project partnering with University of North Dakota, the reconstruction of University Avenue, and reconstruction of Demers Avenue, which was a partnership with Department of Transportation funding. So we're very pleased to provide that, and that was a large portion of our work in 2019 by dollars. The second category, development, we were able to support $3.3 million of residential support and business support. Residential, including pavements, for example, supporting Crary's 9th Edition, Kingsview 73 subdivision, and Payton's Place Circle. In addition to business support in the Opportunity Park area and a couple other areas. So that summed up is $3.3 million of support to Grand Forks. The third category of our program is rehabilitation work or reconstruction. I really term this repair work, smaller projects that are city-funded. We were able to accomplish $2.9 million of work this past year. In reference, in 2018, the 0.5% sales tax provided additional funding into Fund 4815. These are the funds that accomplish work like this, and that amounted to about $2.75 million in 2019, and our program was $2.9 million in this area. So it highlights the importance of that funding, and we're very appreciative to be able to use that and repair the streets of the city. I would like to highlight the work that our electrical division has done. They've done some outstanding work with flashing beacons in school zones to provide safer traffic, and they've also improved the lighting in the sunbeam neighborhood. They've replaced older 30- to 40-year-old wiring in high-pressure sodium fixtures and replaced those fixtures with LED, so they're able to provide more lighting with less electrical demand, so good improvements for some of our neighborhoods. As we look forward to 2020, I anticipate we will execute a comparable program to 2019 dollar-wise. We're estimating about $28 million. I don't anticipate a large partnership project like we had with UND, but rather smaller projects, many more smaller projects that we will accomplish around the city. We will continue to support development as resources permit, and will also continue to utilize, fully utilize, Fund 4815 as it's made available to provide those repairs. I did want to end with one focus area. We're very interested in using different technologies to extend the life of our asphalt pavements. We call this sealant, scrub sealant, brush sealant, fog sealant, but we'll be focusing on this work to try to extend the lifespan of some of our asphalt pavements. It's more cost-effective, and we're going to try that technology here this year as a focus area. Of note on that, our intent is not to special assess that, because it's a fraction of the cost of milling and overlaying, so going forward, that's our intent with that. In the staff report, I provided a list of proposed projects for 2020. I won't go through this whole list, but that's for your awareness. Couple of these projects have already met the council for approval, and obviously, we would bring the remainder of these forward in various stages for your review and approval.
Well, thank you. And Mr. Grasser.
Just a small follow-up. Thank you, Eddie. He caught, he caught all the highlights. Again, maybe just referencing this project list in here. The intent of this is to give the city council kind of an overview of the work upcoming. Otherwise, from your perspective, you just see us bringing projects, right? So we wanted to try to give you a broader perspective as to the types of projects we're doing, where the money is being spent, and those kinds of things. And as Ed mentioned, a couple of maybe policy issues, we're looking at adding fog seal to our list of pavement techniques. Generally, where we do this is our pavements that have been paved previously, and what it is, is it's a light coating essentially of oil or asphalt cement that you put on top to help seal micro cracks and those kinds of things. It's more of a textbook process that we've never been able to do in the past, because we either didn't have enough money and/or it's cheap enough that it just doesn't pay to special assess. And so again, we would be proposing doing those, see us proposing those projects this year without special assessments. Similar to the scrub seal, somewhat of a new technology in our area. It looks a lot like a regular chip seal, where they spray the oil down, but they'll come back with a piece of equipment with either a brush or squeegee-type equipment that tries to force that oil into the cracks. It's supposed to help give us a little better pavement life. We're going to look at doing that on a couple of subdivisions where we're trying, we didn't have the money to really go in and do the techniques that we really probably should, and we're worried about them deteriorating quickly, so we're trying to use this as a holding action. Again, for those reasons, you'll hear us recommend that we not special assess that type of work. So again, kind of some policy heads-up that you'll be seeing coming through the year. And again, we're going to continue to emphasize safety, projects, school beacons, upgrading lighting, things like that, that increase safety and decrease energy usage, things like that. Programs we've been doing for quite a while, but we've been able to enhance some of that with the, with the sales tax dollars. The other thing I'm just going to mention, maybe process-wise, you know, we have a list, but if you think back, most, almost all of these things that are on this list, you're going to see as a city council, probably three times is probably an average. Some you'll see four, some you may only see two. But again, I'm talking about a committee and a council as being one look. So anyway, so these things are, none of these things should be, end up being a surprise. The only ones that you don't see are some of those very, very routine maintenance-type things, where we order LED lights or something like that. But as far as the projects go, you're going to see these things multiple times to review and comment. So I just wanted to catch some of the process items.
Well, thank you, Mr. Grasser. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. And item 4.10 is information only, so no action is required. 4.12.
Parking solution for on-street and public off-street parking enforcement.
Andrea, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Edwards, and I work in the Planning Community Development Department. I've worked with downtown parking for a number of years, probably since community development moved over to City Hall, which has been a few years now. But tonight, I'm hoping to go through a few of the operational limitations we have with downtown parking, and ask for authorization to move forward with the company to end solution to help us mitigate those limitations. I'll run through kind of the highlights of the staff report, if that's all right, and then open it up for questions, if that works for folks. As kind of a parallel offshoot of the downtown action plan, we conducted a downtown parking study, and that produced different results, or similar results than what we've seen in previous parking studies, that we're looking to help mitigate here. One of those was in terms of off-street parking, and when I say off-street, I'm mostly talking about our ramps downtown. We do have a couple of surface lots, which would be off-street, but those aren't permitted, like we permit our corporate and central ramp. So for the permits option, really to provide a better customer service experience and to be more efficient as staff, we need to have a 24/7 purchasing option for permits. Right now, you can only purchase a permit to park in the ramp, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, by going to the second floor of City Hall, cash or check only. I think even the DMV has surpassed us in credit card options, but very limited timeframe for people, especially for a downtown, and very limited cash option, or payment handling options as well. And with that, we've heard from folks that we need to have more flexible billing options. Right now, we only have administrative capacity to bill quarterly through hard copy mailings. People are looking for the online options, the credit card options, the monthly option just for summer, just for winter, coming on and off as their, as their schedule and needs permit with weather for the ramps. And then short-term parking solutions. We currently have a 20, or two-hour free parking stalls in the ramps, but we have no ability to capture any more revenue should they want to stay longer than two hours. We're looking for a solution that would be able to, if you wanted to stay beyond two hours, you could pay for a couple extra bucks to stay four hours, or what have you. And then clear signage and wayfinding inside... And then clear signage and wayfinding inside of the ramps. We know we do, it's a little bit spotty where, what the rules are for the ramps in terms of even finding that information online before you come downtown as a destination. We know we need to improve on that, and so some of those limitations for permitting, when it gets to enforcement, the parking study showed that we have a significant overtime violation downtown, particularly on Third Street where there's two-hour parking, and that is significantly leading to our parking perception problem downtown. When we have cars parked there all day, every day, not moving, it does look like there is no parking. However, our parking study did tell us that we have more than enough capacity with current parking rates now to handle any kind of development that we would see, but that perception is very real with the lack of turnover that we're seeing, so we know we need to step up enforcement a little bit as well. But part of that comes with our current way of doing enforcement with the physical chalking. We're seeing overuse injuries with our CSOs in terms of work safety insurance claims. The actual physical chalking is causing some issues, and a few of you may remember a few months back when Michigan had a court ruling that physically chalking a tire is considered an unlawful search. Doesn't apply to us today because we're not in that district. However, if that ruling were ever to come through, we want to make sure whatever solution we're looking for adequately can adapt to that. And then as well, the current system that we do tickets on is 30 years old and just in general in need of replacement and updating for software. So knowing those current limitations of our system, we went out and looked at different solutions to try to mitigate those. We landed on Passport for a variety of different reasons, but generally, they should be able to address all of our needs. With the Passport system, we would go to a similar style as what UND has, where the permits are tied to license plates, so that when a camera mounted on a vehicle goes by, it'll check the license plate. If you have a permit or if you're parked overtime, you'll get a ticket, that sort of thing. They'll be able to provide online management for payments for permits. Folks will be able to manage their permits at home whenever, however. Credit cards will be an option then, and also the short-term parking solution with the mobile app. In terms of enforcement, the system would come with vehicle-mounted or cameras to be mounted on one of our CSO vehicles that would then make passes through downtown for on-street, passes through the ramps to do the license plate checking. Another benefit of that vehicle or that camera recognition is that it'll help us in turn when it comes to, if somebody wanted to dispute a parking ticket, we'll now be able to have physical pictures, or not physical, but digital pictures of their physical location. You'll be able to judge the background of when they were parked, when that photo was stamped, time stamped, to have more evidence-based if a ticket were ever to be disputed. And then same with, the new system will be cloud-based, so getting on that efficiency and that justification piece of it. Once that ticket is issued, it'll automatically be uploaded. A supervisor, the person who got the ticket, could then contact the supervisor, police department, street maintenance, whoever they need to contact. That supervisor would immediately be able to pull up the images, pull up the information, and respond to that issue, whereas currently, right now, if I understand it correctly, they have to wait for the end of shift for the ticket officer, download the information, and then the supervisor can access it at that point in time. So going to a cloud-based system will become, will make us extremely more efficient and responsive in terms of any issues in that regard. Passport will also handle letter generation and some automatic processing violations in terms of letting folks know they've received a ticket, they need to pay it, how to dispute it, that kind of thing. Passport will package all of that for us. Part of going with Passport as well is that UND currently uses this system, and so it was a heavy motivator for us to choose a system that worked between UND and downtown. In terms of that short-term parking solution, you'll be able to, whether, download one app, whether you're at UND campus or downtown, be able to utilize that to purchase your short-term parking. And so that was a significant motivator, and UND is favorable of the system, and so that was also a nice plus. Downtown Fargo currently uses the same system as well, though they're managed by Interstate Parking Services, but Interstate does use Passport and are happy with the solution as well. And then getting into the education marketing too, we'll work with the DDA to do a better job of interior wayfinding, better job of online education and information distribution. And then we're hoping to adopt a similar thing that Fargo does where first-time violators in the downtown receive a warning and a brochure that tells them where they can park. So we're hoping to adopt that, and we'll get with the DDA to make that happen. In terms of street maintenance, street maintenance will be adopting, should you authorize to move forward, street maintenance would work into the Passport system through a new handheld and be cloud-based and hot up all the benefits that they currently do, but they're not really changing any day-to-day operational, other than they would just be moving from one system to this new system. So it shouldn't have any effect on their day-to-day management, though they are a great example of what to replicate in terms of enforcement because they have proven consistent enforcement gets us high compliance rates. Everybody knows, understands, it's Monday, I got to get my car off the street. So they're the goal that we're shooting for with downtown, and they've set a good example for us to follow. I believe they will be looking at maybe doing the vehicle-mounted cameras in the future, but they'll evaluate the new system and decide whether to move forward, should they need to, should they want to. But right now, they kind of have a good thing going, so they're going to stick with that. And in terms of that, that's pretty much the highlights, so I could certainly answer any questions you might have otherwise.
Will there be a physical ticket on the car?
Yes, yep, there'll still be a ticket, so the cameras will read the license plate and automatically pull your vehicle registration and your information, and then the ticket will be printed off of that.
Please. Any questions? Mr. Sandy.
This is just, so I have an understanding as someone who occasionally parks downtown. Is there, is there going to be more enforcement? I know we're going to do a good job of catching people that are there too long. Are we going to be going through more often as well?
I don't know that it's going to be more often. It's going to be definitely more consistent because of those overuse injuries, because of all other limitations. Aside from the Passport system, parking, the parking fund has budgeted a CSO officer to do parking enforcement, because right now, the CSOs are in high demand for a variety of different calls, animal calls.
Right.
I'm sure there's other things that I'm forgetting.
But we're not going to be dedicating that, a person to just driving around downtown for parking enforcement.
We...
Where are we?
I'll answer.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would look at being more consistent in how we're doing this. The CSO would be part of this, would be most of their duties, would be the parking that we're handling downtown. So we're hoping, yeah, we would want more consistent enforcement two or three times a day, but we're going to have to see what that looks like and how that fits in.
Let me rephrase. Are we adding an employee to cover downtown parking?
We've added a CSO in the 2020 budget.
Right.
Part of the responsibility that they have is for parking, but there's also some other things that we're working with, with urban development as far as more assistance in the ramps and those types of security issues that we're working on also.
Right. Are we going to be adding another officer specifically to make sure that we have consistent parking enforcement downtown?
I wouldn't say specifically for that, but that's going to be the main function that they're going to be working on, yes.
But we already, we already added the officer, right? We're not going to be adding another person.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No, okay, all right. So we have the person in place.
Sorry, yes.
We're going to be perhaps checking duties and, yes, very good.
I misunderstood your question.
No, yeah, no, I understand, yes. We're both having an issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. Weber. So under the current system, we're just chalking or whatever method to determine the two hours. With the new system, we'll be able to tell if this person has ever received a ticket for that before or if it's their first time. If it's their first offense, they just receive a warning. That's nice.
Correct, yep.
And help educate people about what the rules are.
Right.
Do, and this may be a question for Mr. Swanson, do we have the ability to increase fines for repeat offenders?
It's not in our ordinance right now, and I, that would be a question.
Mr. Swanson.
I would like to have the opportunity to research it, but generally, in theory, potentially, you would. I'm assuming your definition of a repeat offender would be anywhere within the downtown area or at a particular location?
I was thinking someone who consistently violates the two-hour limit, and I don't know what the numbers would be to designate a repeat offender, but that's what I was thinking.
I'd want to have an opportunity to do some research on it. I can't tell you immediately, no, I can see some red flags with that.
Very good. And currently, we do not have that. This system will allow us, instead of ticketing someone who might be doing that for the first time, they get a warning. So that's a nice part of that. Currently, the, especially the central ramp, I have, as a member of the public parking in there without a permit, I have to go up to a higher floor. Is that correct?
Depends on which entrance you take. If you come off of Fourth, you immediately go up the incline. If you come off of Fifth, you'll, you're at the first level, which is kind of, which is central, and two-hour parking, which is right behind Bondser's.
And as you're looking at signage and other rules, the intention is to make this easier for the public, to both be aware that they can park there and easier for them to find out where they're supposed to be parking.
Right.
These are intentions as well?
Right.
Great, because I think that permit holders or others who use the ramps regularly, they know the rules. The general public, we should be making them first in terms of outreach to make them comfortable and feel welcome in using the ramps.
I agree.
One of the other things in looking at, I think Minot, Bismarck, and Fargo are all using, and I may be wrong about that, but I think they're all using a company called Interstate that helps to manage their ramps.
Right. They essentially outsource their management of their parking system, just a third party. Interstate handles everything from permitting to, in the case, I'm more familiar with downtown Fargo, I don't know much about Bismarck and Minot or anything like that, but they also do on-street enforcement in downtown Fargo, I know.
In addition to ramp management, they're also helping with...
Yes. There's companies out there you can hire to do just about anything, so.
The experience in Fargo, correct me again if I'm wrong, has been that it's actually been a revenue generator for them.
Right. Part of the downtown parking study looked into what it would cost to have a third-party manage the permit side, the ramp system for us. Bismarck and Fargo ballparking here, don't quote me on these exact numbers, I believe are about $525 for their management of the third-party contract, and then they take in over a million in revenue, and I don't know anything more.
$525, $525,000 is the charge to the city?
That's my high-level general understanding, and I don't know how the revenue is split up or anything like that.
Right.
But it's definitely something we've considered. However, we took the approach of the CSL route and this, this system, Passport, as a way forward. Right now, we're, knock on wood, we're closely getting the parking assessments down to zero and the parking fund self-sustaining, and that's our ultimate goal, is to make the parking fund self-sustaining. And so trying to wrap in a third-party $500,000 contract at this time seemed more than we should take on at this point. We should really be focusing on getting that parking fund self-sustaining first, making sure we have consistent enforcement, making sure we have consistent signage, that we have covered all our basics before then going above and beyond. And so that's our goal with this, is to get a system that brings us into the 21st parking century and go from there.
Those are noble goals, but my sense is that Interstate has been very useful, and you mentioned the $525,000 expense, but also I want to make sure that we understand, then there's about a million dollars in revenue generated from that system. So this pays for itself?
Yes, but if you look at the environments of Fargo and Bismarck, they probably have a more active downtown, a more high, higher traffic, higher turnover. They also have higher parking permit rates and higher tickets, I believe, don't quote me on that either, but I don't know what their rates are at to generate that revenue. I know from our experience or from my experience working with parking permits, every time we talk about raising permits, we get pushback, and so we haven't been willing to make that jump yet. At a certain point, downtown is going to be in enough of a demand that we need to, but we're not, we're not at the Fargo-Bismarck level yet, and so I don't know that we're quite ready to move to that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle.
Just kind of piggyback something Mr. Weber said. I like, like the idea of keeping this in-house. I like the ability for our chief of police and our deputy chief, who have a lot of common sense, to be able to manage this versus a third-party company, which at all times, you're not sure what you're going to get. But another point I want to bring up is, I believe the CSOs have done some work with the county ramp. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm not sure where we're at right now with that because of the agreement that some of that went back to the county for enforcement. We have enforced that in the past, I know.
We, we previously, our community development previously had a maintenance management contract to manage the county ramp. We currently do not and haven't for maybe a year or two, but the benefit of the Passport system and the CSO is that should we, should the county ever be interested in collaborating with us again, they can add on to our system and integrate very easily, and so that can be a future phase.
Thank you. Chief Nelson.
Just to clarify, Mr. Weigle, in the past, Andrea's just totally correct, right now, the county ramp is actually being managed by the courthouse deputies or one of the deputies that would be assigned to the county office building through an agreement with the city to allow them to sit. So right now, that's been in their scope of their duties.
Have we looked at, and maybe this is something you guys can discuss with the county, but if we're going to this system or looking at going to this system, it makes sense for the city CSO who's already patrolling downtown and going through that area to also go through the county ramp, so that it's a consistent process for anybody that might be visiting downtown Grand Forks. So maybe something to look at for the future might make it easier for people.
I love talking to Tom Ford about parking, and we have great conversations about it. Timing right now for county didn't work out so well to integrate with Passport because they're looking at significant capital improvements to their ramp. They were going to go last year, but the bids came in too high. They're going next year. So their budget right now wasn't ideal to integrate with us at the timeframe we were looking at, but yes, we will continue to talk to Tom Ford. We're small enough downtown where it makes sense that all three ramps are, regardless of who owns it, who operates it, it makes sense to the public, it acts as one system. So we'll look into it.
Any further comments? Ms. Marshall.
Just a question, when would you project the Passport system being up and running?
We have to, oh, sorry. We had to spend the next few months negotiating back and forth through their lawyers and Mr. Swanson, and then we hope to have something started summer. We would love to get the system up and running to have a couple months trial and error before school starts in August for Central High and UND, so that would be our goal.
Okay, and I'm glad to see that education and marketing is a big piece of what you're going to be focusing on in advance. I think that would be helpful to the public to understand that changes are taking place and understand what they're about. So when you spoke of the free pass for a first offense, is that just at the onset of the new system, or would that be something that you would propose ongoingly?
I would assume it's ongoing, but I'll let you...
Yeah, and I would anticipate we would do that moving forward because we have new people coming into the city all the time, and I think to do it for a while and then stop, that wouldn't be right either, but I think as new people come into town, as new classes come into Central or new students come into UND, would be the right thing to do to give that warning the first time.
Good, thank you. I'm glad to hear that because I think, you know, we want this to be successful and people not to bristle against it if they, if it surprises them. The other comment that I would make is that we have amongst our population in Grand Forks sort of an odd aversion to parking ramps, and I think part of that is, you know, what you've talked about of wanting to do better signage so people understand, and so it's easier to figure out where do you park, where do you go, where you're not going to get a ticket, where it's legal to do and all of that. So I'm thrilled that that's going to be a part of it. I think there's some old baggage maybe from people thinking that parking ramps aren't safe, and so when you're doing the educational efforts, if you can focus on that as well, I think that would be helpful to the public.
Sure.
Well, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Weigle mentioned that... Um, Mr. Weigle mentioned that, that local control was, uh, uh, desirable. Is that some, is this work that the police department wants to continue handling? Or would it be better to have someone else doing this one? Could you respond to that?
That's a tough one. I think some of that is a policy decision for the council to make, obviously. Um, if we have the, uh, equipment that we're talking about and the new software, we're gonna manage it out of the police department. We have, uh, people available to do that. They're currently managing the system that we have right now, and they would still be available to, to run the new system. Some of the follow-up gut, does go through the company and isn't handled by our employees. Uh, so I think there's gonna be some efficiencies there that come into the system that are gonna help. Um, and that's sure something that we can look at in the future. I, it's difficult for me to give a solid answer for you, I apologize for that.
We'd have to see how it plays out. Um, and, and police department, like all the city departments, you're, you're happy to do what, what's, what you're asked to do.
We're always happy to work hard, yep.
Uh, but, but perhaps with the Passport system, we could get a, a sense of, uh, does this alleviate some burden? I'm, I'm curious, right now, does, does parking enforcement help, uh, the, the general mission of law enforcement?
Wow.
Yeah, that's probably not a fair question.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're looking for compliance, and one of the things that has come up the last few times with the parking study is that we're, we're not able to get consistent enforcement, um, throughout the day, throughout the week. And because of that, then we just don't get the compliance that we were, would be looking for. So, we're hoping that that's also what happens, is with consistent enforcement, you start to get better compliance, and that's one of the things that we're looking for, to open up spots and to make the parking that much, uh, better for everyone and, and get people moving through and enjoying our downtown.
Very good, thanks.
Mr. Field?
If I could, uh, I think, uh, people respect, uh, the Grand Forks Police Department. And so, even if, um, our street department, our public works department, they do street maintenance on, uh, residential areas primarily. And there's something about a uniformed officer, uh, from, uh, an established, uh, police department, whether it's UND or the city, where you get, um, respect. And I think that's an important part of, uh, of what we see as part of doing this. And this is, I think, good government, uh, doing, uh, reasonable service. And if we can integrate it as part of a, a multi-layered, um, responsibility of these CSOs, I think it's the best way to do it. And sometimes it's good to outsource things, but I think when it relates to enforcement, there's nothing better than local government, um, performing that task.
Thank you.
Okay, so Passport system would be used by, by the police department. Um, Interstate would be, uh, something else, although that's primarily ramp management. Uh, and our, our downtown is gonna be changing rapidly over the next few years, and the parking situation is as well. Uh, I have a strong sense that, uh, a third-party like Interstate could be very effective for the ramps. And I recognize that there's some upfront expense, but that this then, the, the record is that it, it's a revenue enhancement ultimately. Uh, and so, it seems that it would be a legitimate, um, use of the revolving loan fund of, of growth fund dollars when it's time for that. Very good. That's all I've got then. Thanks.
Any further comments or questions? We have a staff recommendation before us. Do we have a motion and a second? Ms. Marshall seconds, Mr. Vian, motions. Mr. Vian seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries, thank you, Andrew. And then I need introduction ordinance on 411A and B. Who would do that for us? Mr. Weigle, thank you. And next we go on to number five, informational items. I have none. Item six, public comments. Anyone wish to address the community or the council? None. Item seven, approve the minutes and bills, 7-1.
Uh, the vendor, uh, vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Need a motion and a second to pay the bills, Mr. Weber, motions. Mr. Weigle, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries, thank you, 7-2.
In the minutes from October 7th and 21st, November 4th and 18th, and December 2nd.
Need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, Ms. Doctor, Docler, and then Mr. Vian. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries, thank you. Item eight, city administrator comments. None this evening, Mr. Field, thank you. Item nine, mayor and council member comments. Councilman Weigle?
No, thank you, mayor.
Ms. Docler? Mr. Weber?
Actually, just a quick question. We, we just approved five sets of minutes. Um, this is, uh, an unusual situation, and, uh, we have some improved systems, and, and we don't anticipate that that's gonna be the case again in the future, is that right?
No, we, we did get behind on minutes due to different issues, but, um, the plan is to be more up-to-date on them, so...
Very good, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Mock?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, just a quick thank you to our engineering department. Uh, the report that you gave tonight was, was, uh, very helpful to, uh, kind of get a recap of the work that's been done over the last year. So often, we just move ahead to the next thing and don't think about what was accomplished. And I think that it's important for our taxpayers to know how their taxpayer dollars are being spent, and some exciting improvements to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Council Vice President, Vian?
And just one, uh, comment, I guess, in that it was the, I'd like to thank the street department for all the work that they've done widening and hauling snow and getting us, uh, the traffic a little bit safer. They've done a great job and say thanks.
Thank you. And again, we were saddened by the untimely passing of Elliot Glassheim. And again, our public works crews are doing a tremendous job with the huge snowfall and rainfall and all the problems, so please be careful driving around schools. And your city calendar's out or will be with your home shortly. And with that, item 10, adjournment. Motion to adjourn, Ms. Marshall. Motions, second, Ms. Docler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, we stand adjourned, thank you. Alice.
Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So, we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Aw, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
Brantley Gilbert returns to Grand Forks. Fired Up Tour 2020 with special guests Chase Rice and Brandon Lay. Alara Center, Saturday, May 2nd. Get tickets now at Ticketmaster.com. The brand-new album Fire and Brimstone drops everywhere October 4th. Brantley Gilbert, live in concert. Check more at BrantleyGilbert.com.